All right, we're gonna get started, City Council's special work session. First up is BRE.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Dave's got a handout here he's gonna hand out to you.
You have to introduce yourself for the tape, please.
Thank you.
David? Thank you.
How you doing?
Thank you.
Jim's sitting over there.
He's usually over here, isn't he?
Yes, he is.
What he wants to be, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, good afternoon. I'm Mike O'Neill. I'm the Executive Director for Burlington Riverfront Entertainment. And this is David. I'll let him introduce himself.
David Kroll, the Assistant Director for Burlington Riverfront Entertainment.
We just wanted to come down this afternoon and meet with all of you folks and some of the new faces here on the City Council and kinda go over what we've done the last couple of years that we've been in the building and what we're gonna plan on do this year and just give you a kind of a brief overview of what that looks like. So, I'm gonna let Dave start with that.
So, in 2019, it was interesting, to say the least. We definitely faced some obstacles, but we also overcame a lot of obstacles as well. In the auditorium alone in 2019, we did hold thirty-six events. We also had to cancel seventeen due to the flood. A lot of those were weddings, a lot of private events like that, some conferences. Some of the bigger events that really hurt was Mannheim Steamroller and also our haunted auditorium. But some of our highlighted things that we got to do in the auditorium last year was the Jared Nieman concert. The Gather Vocal Band went over really well. 2019 was also our first year hosting Friday Fest. Or not hosting it, but taking that over and running Friday Fest. And then our summer concerts, we had to move to the Westland Mall, which actually worked out pretty well and was overall a pretty successful event. We hosted RagBri, which was insane but fun. Burlington Heritage Days was also fun. We also, of course, we host our legacy events as well like Civic Music and Snowball. At the Port, we held sixty events, twenty-six canceled events due to the flood. The Port continues to be an excellent venue for weddings, birthdays, graduations, anniversaries, craft of vendor shows, various community events and stuff like that. It's kinda, it's always been a good place for that and still is. The Depot, it doesn't look like much, but we've actually improved quite a bit from our first year with only one event. So, or two events in 2018. We had six events scheduled. One of them was canceled due to the flood. We, the Depot's kind of, we're trying to get the Depot in the minds of people and remind them that it's a cool space. We do still run into the obstacle of it being open to the public during daytime hours, but our wall partitions that we purchased for that has definitely helped. And we definitely are, the Depot is becoming something that is on people's radars and we are starting to book more events at the Depot for this year. Some enhancements that we've made, in case you guys aren't aware, in the auditorium in the arena, we now have the video screens to promote events and sponsors and it also enhances our concerts. If you were at our shows this past weekend, it was pretty cool. We had the bands up on the big screens as well. It was pretty awesome. And then, we do have our ticket box offices open Tuesdays through Fridays. The Depot, I'd mentioned the room dividers that we have for the Great Room. And then, one of the big things that we promised you guys is that we are gonna have a caring and devoted staff available Monday through Friday for anybody who wants to reserve any one of these venues. And then, we have heard through the grapevine that we have, we have made a reduction in utility and maintenance investment by the city since we've been in those buildings. Giving back to the community is something that's very important to us. One of our things that we did just last year that we're really proud of is our Christmas display that we had on the riverfront. You know, it wasn't a moneymaker for us, but it was something that we wanted to do for the community. Our riverfront should have a giant Christmas tree. And I think downtown Burlington deserves that. And so, we wanted to make that happen and with the help of sponsors throughout the community, we were able to make that happen. And it's something that we hope to carry on and grow and make bigger and better every year. We would love to see the riverfront become the destination for out-of-towns as well, out-of-town people to come and see. And then, we continue to receive positive comments and well wishes and gratitude for our efforts. To this day, everywhere I go, someone mentions the Christmas tree on the riverfront, so. And then, I'll let Mike take over from there.
So, as David kind of went over some of the stuff that we canceled, we did have forty-four canceled events over this last 2019 season, which we estimated around seventy thousand dollars in revenue loss for the auditorium, the port, and the depot. And in our first year as running the three properties, we gave back to the city about thirty-five thousand dollars in the twenty percent of rent and everything else that, anything we rent, we give twenty percent back to the city. Even with the flood, we're still gonna end up giving back to the city a little over twenty-one thousand dollars this year. So, it, even with it and all the cancellations, we're still trying to help knock down the subsidy that we're getting from the city and make the buildings more viable and a little less of a strain on the city as we move forward. So, in 2020, we've been kinda working furiously on trying to get everything booked for this year. We're a little behind the ball from everything that happened, but we're in talks with a circus right now. We are working on, or we are doing winter Friday Fests. We'll have our first one in February. We're gonna do one February, March, and April. The one in April is gonna be down at the Depot to try to bring some attention to the Depot. We'll have an acoustic band down there and have drinks down there and invite people to come down after work and socialize and just see the space. We are doing another summer concert this year. It's going to be Burlington Riverfront Entertainment Presents Steamboat Days. We are, David and I and the BRE Board are going to host the music side of it. And then, the Burlington Steamboat Days group is going to put on all the ancillary or the extra events, the senior days, the kids' days and stuff like that. So, that'll be their responsibility, but it is our responsibility. We're gonna do the summer concert, just like we did this last year, but we're gonna hopefully do it on our home turf and blow it out again. So, that's our, we're hoping to have it down there and do that. We'll do Heritage Days again. Every year we do that, we find something that works really, really well. This year, we brought in a big video screen and we had the Iowa-Iowa State game on. It's Iowa, and you know, if it's not raining on our event, it's raining on the event we're watching on TV. So, you know, it's tough. We're looking at bringing in a comedian. We're definitely gonna do the Haunted House again. The Haunted House was duly missed this year. We've heard lots of people say, you know, we had such a good time the first year and they were bummed and we were bummed not to be able to do that. So, we are definitely planning on doing that. Mannheim Steamroller, I'm holding four dates for them. We haven't confirmed on a date yet, but they do have me holding four dates, so they should be back in 2020. And then, all the legacy events are back this year with Snowball, Civic Music, and so on. And that's pretty much all we've got. Any questions or comments or?
How's the repairs coming to like the downstairs, the banquet room?
It's, we're starting to see a lot of progress. I mean, I know that the city staff has been working furiously with FEMA and everything else, and I know that that's just been a tiresome step to go. And you know, it's where things are starting to move and we're starting to see it. Their floors down got laid this week by the elevator. The elevator got carpeted. I've met with Brayton several times to go over carpet samples and wall colors and all that other stuff. So, things are moving along down there, but like I said, it is what it is. You know, it's the government and they take their time and we just see what we can do with it.
Then by government, you mean FEMA?
FEMA, yes.
Just helping you out back there. Anyway, all right, that's what.
Hey, Mike and David, I loved the Christmas tree lighting event. That was a huge hit. You need to do that again. That was awesome. And then, is there any, there's lots of kids down there getting their senior pictures taken and homecoming pictures taken at the depot. Do you have a sign or says rent me, call, or anything like that? Maybe people don't know it's available.
We don't have any signage. It's something our marketing and our development team, we've talked about. There's even, there's more signage that needs to be done at the port and the auditorium as well, just wayfinding signs and stuff like that that we've talked about. It's been on our radar for, since we've been in the building. It just keeps getting pushed around and stuff like that, but it is something that we need to get taken care of.
I just see lots of parents down there and pictures on Facebook all the time, and I don't know if everyone has communicated that it's available for rent or not.
Absolutely.
And then, when you have to cancel an event, do the artists, depending on their contract, do they get a percentage still?
If it's, luckily, we haven't had to cancel like Mannheim last year, so there was no deposit paid. Usually, it's a, on some acts, they're good with thirty days before the event that they want a deposit. Some acts, like our summer concert, they wanted fifty percent at time of signing contracts. And they were, they worked with us to move it out to the mall and they were really good with that.
Good, good.
Mannheim, we didn't have any money down and they were super understandable about our case, you know. I just, you know, like we called them and says, you know, we don't wanna bring you in here and not be able to represent Burlington the way that it needs to be represented and without having dressing rooms and a kitchen and everything else to house, you know, twenty to thirty people, it was just best to push it off another year. And they were super understandable with it. So, we didn't lose any money on any deposits or anything with the flood or anything like that, so it all worked out pretty well.
Awesome. Thank you.
So, thank you.
Mike, how many, how many events did you have in 2018?
Off the top of my head, I don't remember.
It was gonna be a lot more this last year and 2019.
Yeah, we've had significantly more in 2019 than what we would've had in 2018. I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I can get it for you.
Okay, well, I looked at, it said you projected that you lost seventy thousand in revenue. Do you know what you made? Oh, the first year you gave back thirty-five, okay.
Yep.
And then, next year's looking, this year's looking even bigger than what you had planned?
That's our goal, you know, with the Haunted House being back and Mannheim being back, the summer concert. The summer concert ended up costing us an extra twenty thousand dollars to move it out to the mall by the time we got generators and everything else. If we wouldn't have had to do that, we cleared, we broke even on the summer concert and probably made about eleven to twelve hundred dollars out there. So, if we wouldn't have had to do that, we probably would've put an extra twenty grand in our pocket and then at least given another twenty percent back to the city on that. So, it's, there was, there was extra cost there, but yeah, we're hoping everything that is going on this year is just gonna be bigger and better.
I think you did the best you could with the situation you had, so.
It was tough, but you know, everybody was happy with it out there and we were gracious that the city let us move it out there. We were concerned about that, but everybody worked well and played well together and it wasn't necessarily great weather. It rained on us a lot and we set up the fence several, several times, but whatever makes the show go on.
Well done.
Thank you.
So, Jim, we got one year left on this original contract?
This contract expires the end of December.
Correct.
The budget is built on the presumption that you would renew that contract at the same cost. And I don't know what the proposal is gonna be from BRE for what the renewal contract would, what kind of terms that they were gonna be looking for, but that's something that would be very beneficial to know.
Absolutely, yeah.
The council needs to know if you're looking for the same type of contractual amount on an annual basis, more or less. And the other piece of that, the council also has, you know, the alternative proposal that's coming in this next Monday.
Right. And that's kinda what I think we're all sitting around waiting for. I mean, we have come and asked for an extra year to recover from the flood, but I think everything's kind of waiting and hinging on what happens with Monday. But yeah, absolutely, if we come back with a new proposal to keep running the auditorium, it will be at a less subsidy than what we're taking right now.
Okay, so that kinda conversation, if we're gonna have, well, it kinda depends on where you head after presentation next Monday. But you're gonna need to make some decisions, one way or another, of what, how you're wanting to do that, from the least, how you're putting that in the budget, but both groups are needing to know what you're doing moving forward.
Sure. That's why I asked. So, the other thing, I guess, I'm still unclear about, and I guess it's more your organization, but we still approve the liquor license on that. So, the subcommittees holds that or BRE holds that?
So, Steamboat Days still technically holds that. There, we are having talks right now on moving that over to BRE. Steamboat Days owns a bunch of property and it, right now, the contract would expire at the end of this year with Steamboat Days and then that liquor license would be up for grabs. We're trying to, because we're all, we're all one family now and we're trying to play well in one sandbox together, it would make a whole lot more sense for the liquor license to move to BRE for financial reasons, for bookkeeping reasons, and for everything under the sun reasons.
Are they operating under BRE?
They are. They have moved from a board to a committee.
Okay.
But they do, they still own the liquor license. Dave and I manage it. We, I mean, we do everything for it. We renewed the liquor license for them and everything this year. So, it's, like I said, it is something that is in the works. It's very strong on Dave and I's list of something to get done to move to us for, like I said, as the bookkeeper down there to have to keep two sets of books for everything, it's a lot of extra work. So, there is talks about just moving it over to us and we're hoping in the next couple of months that that is taken care of.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for the guys? All right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Okay, next up is DESCOM.
Sorry, I don't have a PowerPoint. My name's Shanna Kurgmeyer. I know. I'm the Director of DESCOM. And I'm here today just kinda run over our budget for this next year and discuss some of the things we worked on in 2019. So, I came in, in the middle of a, somebody else's budget and in the middle of just moving to a new center. So, last year's numbers were a little wonky, I guess is a technical term for it, right? This year, we're definitely right. You know, with doing my own budget, we're right where I expected to be at this time of year. Even with, we have a couple opportunities that cost money, but we were able to absorb that within the budget that we're working with. So, the biggest one of that is that the state decided to basically pay nine, almost nine-hundred-thousand dollars in software upgrades and equipment upgrades, with the understanding that some of the optional things, we picked up the original hardware for that. So, what that's ultimately gonna allow us to do over the next several years is save money, mainly with our call processing systems. They're big computers and every couple of years, you have to spend about sixty thousand dollars to upgrade them. We will no longer have to take on that bill. That's something the state's gonna do. And it, I mean, it works out for them. They end up saving some money on the line fees and whatnot that they have to pay the telephone companies, so. That was their motivation for doing it. In the process, we're gonna have all-new computer-aided dispatching software, which we needed an upgrade on that, so we were able to get that done. All the officers are gonna have the kinda state-of-the-art mapping and computer-aided dispatching interfaces in their vehicles. And there's new mapping. We're gonna go to emergency medical dispatch software that integrates in with everything and it's really beneficial for us. So, it's about sixteen thousand dollars that we had to invest in that. That wasn't necessarily a budgeted thing this year, but we were able to absorb that in our budget, so. We did contract negotiations this last year. They negotiated a seven percent raise over the next three years, so two and a half percent a year ballpark. So, with that, our budget increased, I've got it written down here, thirty-six hundred dollars from last year to this year. It's already been through my control board and approved. So, we were able to find some places that we could cut some things, but still operate at a high level, so. I guess, do you guys have any questions for me? I know the big one is the funding long-term. And I, we were supposed to have that meeting last week, so I was kinda hoping that when we scheduled this, that I'd have an answer about that. That meeting is tonight, so I'm sure John will report back on what the outcome is on that.
I'm so looking forward to it.
I, we're all thrilled about it, so. But that's kind of a, you know, moving forward, it, the outcome of the meeting tonight kinda depends on how we're funded from here on out, so. Obviously, so, the city's contribution this year is almost six-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand dollars, which is just up a little bit from last year. But, like I said, not much in the grand scheme of things. That would be money, you know, in the future that wouldn't come out of your general fund. It would just be a tax levy, so.
Through the county.
Through the county.
If that's the way.
If that's how.
Yeah.
I don't get a vote tonight, so however it goes, that's how it goes, but. Any questions for me?
Any questions, anybody?
Nope.
That's pretty quick and easy.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Development, Parks, and Rec. Mr. Tisland, it's your show. Thank you, Shanna.
You better dazzle us with this PowerPoint.
Yeah, Kurgmeyer. So, I'm gonna go over community development and parks recreation. I'll start with development and if you have any questions throughout, certainly ask me, but then have time in between the two departments for questions as well. With some new council members, I wanna go over some of the background as well. It's our organizational chart showing full-time employees in each division. So, currently, the, myself and our project coordinator serve both on the parks end of things and the development side. We have four full-time code inspectors, one planner, so that's all the full-time on the development side. We have one seasonal nuisance inspector, approximately eight-month position during, over the spring through fall. On the parks end, we have eight full-time individuals, one permanent part-time, and then a whole host of seasonals that help operate all of our facilities. From the parks division, there's two full-time individuals in parks, two full-time in forestry and one permanent part-time in forestry. That part-time is a twenty-nine-hour-a-week position. Recreation has two full-time. That includes one ground superintendent at the golf course and then Brad, who's the golf course manager, also rec manager. He's paid, split between the recreation budget and then the golf course budget. And then, two full-time at the RecPlex, grounds superintendent there and a RecPlex manager. So, in total, fifteen total full-time employees between development and parks. Starting with development, our mission is to improve the safety and feel of our community through high-quality customer service and consistent code enforcement. So, really providing that service of building code, rental code, nuisance code, zoning code enforcement and services to the community. There's two code items under the development department, the building code administration, which five of our individuals are, personnel are under that code, and then planning and zoning, where we have two full-time under that budget code. Again, building permits and inspections, construction, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, et cetera. Rental inspections, based on our size, we are required to have a rental program by state code. Some vary depending on the community, but ours, any property in the community that's not owner-occupied is required to have a rental permit, whether it's a relative, whether you charge rent or not. If the owner does not live there, it has to have a rental permit by our code. Nuisance inspections and compliance, and then planning and zoning, where we do site plan review, planning commission, historic preservation commission, zoning board, and dealing with projects and grants.
Eric, I do have a question. On the rental inspections, how often are those done?
It's three years for multifamily and then five years for single-family and duplex.
Okay, thank you.
And then, Eric, are you looking to make any changes with the rental inspections on the revenue side?
Yep, I have that in here, yep. So, we'll talk about that here shortly. Right now, the seasonal staffing was added a couple of years ago to try and address or get to some proactive nuisance inspection and enforcement. We are very reactionary in a lot of what we do based on staffing complaint basis for a lot of nuisances. With our seasonal staffing, we're able to get out a little bit more and try and target some areas, target some neighborhoods, and you'll see our nuisance numbers, kinda what, how that impacted it over the last couple of years. You will see some decreases, I guess, in personnel costs over the last year. We did have city planner position and code inspector position open for quite some time. Planner had a city planner leave and then hired one that is a recent graduate, so hired in January and they started in May, so there's, I guess, that decrease in personnel cost. And then, a code inspector had a couple retire, so we've had some newer employees come on board that have lowered some of our personnel cost over the last couple of years. Nuisance abatement, that's the largest item under our building code administration, thirteen-oh-one, five-twenty-nine. It's miscellaneous technical services. We have sixty-five thousand budgeted for that. That's typically in, had been typically in the thirty-five to forty-thousand-dollar range prior to that Emerald Ash Borer in our community. So, that's been elevated the last few years, but it has been on a constant decline. I think it was seventy thousand last year, maybe eighty thousand the year prior, so that continues to go down and we are still seeing quite a few private ash trees that are becoming hazards. As I talked about in the parks budget, all the right-of-way ash trees have been removed or being treated by the homeowner. So, from the city's requirement, we've addressed all of ours, but we are still dealing with quite a few private homeowners that have ash trees in their property that are becoming hazards and have to be removed. Anytime we do increase nuisance abatement, that requires us to increase or account for that in the budget. Anytime we abate a property through nuisance, we have to have the funds to pay the contractor to do that. If we don't have funds available, we can't do as much as maybe people want us to do or we'd like to do, whether that's dealing with nuisance garages, dealing with large properties or other issues. We have a budget and if we, we wanna address thirty garages and it's five thousand or two thousand dollars each garage, that's sixty thousand that eats up. Now, we still have to deal with all the mowings, all the trash, all the debris, all the trees, and so there is a finite amount of what we can do. We look to try and do as much as we can, but some of those extra things like garages that I presented last fall, we can't just demo all the garages we want that are in a condition that might not be very sightly, 'cause we don't have the funds to do that. This is the operating budget for the two divisions, from FY nineteen budget actual, what was adopted for FY twenty and then FY twenty-one proposed. So, you see on building code administration, we're actually less in FY twenty-one than we were in FY nineteen. Part of that is the decrease in nuisance due to ash trees the last couple of years. Part of that is personnel cost with some turnover in staffing and hiring back at, towards the lower level of the pay range versus some of our employees had been there quite a while. So, we had saw a decrease of twenty-six thousand in the development department operating budget from FY twenty to twenty-one. And again, a lot of that's due to personnel. The two big items not in personnel on the building code side, again, is miscellaneous technical services, the sixty-five thousand for nuisance. On the planning side is consulting and professional services. So, we budget the GIS, which the city's a part of the GIS commission along with Des Moines County and West Burlington. City pays a percentage of that cost to operate GIS in the county and part of our budget pays for half of the city's cost. I think Public Works covers the other half of that cost and we have two seats on that commission. And then, the DPI annual contribution, the fifteen thousand comes out of that as well. So, those are the larger operating costs outside of personnel. Revenue for the development department, kind of look at three different categories of building permits, which includes mechanical, electrical, plumbing, as well as just general construction, building permits. Housing permits for rentals and nuisance fees, whether that's collected directly from the city or through payback from the county as taxes are paid and those assessments are paid off, we collect those as well. We did see or have seen last year in FY nineteen a very large decrease in building permits. There was very, very little construction. There is very, very little construction in FY eighteen compared to previous years. Um, I think the year prior in FY seventeen, it was, uh, closer to three hundred thousand.
Yes.
So, uh, that's a very significant drop. That's not something we can impact. Uh, we can't just generate more construction. Uh, we collect the fees, we're a beneficiary of that construction, because we do inspections and plan reviews and all that. But, uh, that's not something we can just create more revenue from if there's not, uh, the market or the economic conditions that are driving more construction in our community.
Yeah, and even the number that is in here, uh, we were at three hundred and six thousand in two thousand seventeen, uh, hundred and fifty-four thousand in eighteen, a hundred thousand in nineteen. So budgeting in here, two hundred thousand or two hundred, it's two hundred, you show two forty for the total. I'm looking at just, at building permits themselves. We're, we're budgeting a little, quite a bit higher than what we may end up actually being. It's, but we are kind of dependent on what happens with the overall economy.
I, I do have a question on nuisance fees on your revenue. Eric, is that, is there anyone that collects those or those just automatically go to the tax?
They, we send out a, a notice to everyone that we have a nuisance on and a lot of those, I don't know the breakdown if maybe a third are paid directly to the city and two-thirds from the county.
So some open do pay?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, because that, that list gets pretty healthy, that's what.
Yeah.
Probably the majority comes through taxes.
Yeah, and FY nineteen, sixty thousand was through taxes and fifteen, or fourteen-five was through direct payment to the city.
Okay.
But we send out a notice to everyone that gets it and tells them the deadline, and if they don't pay by such date, then it goes on to council and approves. But, uh, we do get some that come in and pay, so that it doesn't show up on their taxes.
But we get that eventually, I mean, assuming they pay their taxes.
Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, if they pay their taxes or if they don't want the property to ultimately go up to tax sale, then it will get paid at some point. Um, we do have a lot of, uh, annual nuisances, uh, some of those we've tried to acquire, uh, through, um, six fifty-seven As that they're maybe past nuisance abatements on, um, or, uh, tax deed from the county. Um, we have properties in the past that we demoed prior to ownership, so that ten thousand dollar demo, uh, fee is on that property, which makes it really unsalable. And then we have annual new, mo- mowing fees on it. Uh, there's one where we, uh, petitioned the county to get a tax deed from that had thirty thousand in back assessments on. And that wasn't going to change unless we get ownership it, of it and get it on a neighbor's property, or neighboring property owner's, uh, ownership, so. Um, but yet the majority do pay if they want to maintain their property. We have seen some increased, uh, development in the past year, the Blaw Building, uh, going on downtown, uh, hopefully at the Tama Building will move forward. Um, the owners of the Blaw Y and J also in the Motors Building and have plans for that. Um, discussions on the PD, former PD site. Um, so there are some potential projects out there that could have pretty significant revenue for, for us, but, uh, until we see a building permit, uh, we, we don't know for sure when those will happen. Uh, overall NF, uh, this current fiscal year, uh, building permit revenue is up, uh, twenty-eight thousand over FY nineteen, year-to-date, at the same period. Uh, which isn't still quite where we'd want to be, but it is good to see that it is up. Um, we are looking at a rental fee increase, uh, planning to better cover the cost of the program. Uh, if we factor out, uh, even just one employee at the cost of our, under building code, um, and then trying to have that, uh, cost of that employee or under our building code administration, uh, cover the cost. We're still operating short on a rental program now, so, um, we'll be looking to bring something forward to council, uh, here in the next couple of weeks or within the next month on that. Um, looking not to have a significant increase, but something that would, uh, for the property owners, but something that would, uh, generate revenue for us to cover some of our cost. Um, likely a, a dollar less per month of fee cost for that. Uh, this just breaks down, uh, kind of the personnel cost, contractual and commodities of the development department. Uh, just so you can see what our, again, like most departments, personnel cost is the primary driver of what we do. Uh, contractual, that includes the, um, the nuisance costs under there, the miscellaneous technical services and, uh, um, professional services, the GIS and, uh, DPI cost. Uh, general fund net ex- expenditures, net, net of grants and fees is, uh, so we cover about half of our cost in the development department through our permits and fees. So, uh, eight hundred and eight thousand is our, um, proposed, uh, budget, operating budget with four hundred and two thousand, uh, net, uh, minus grants and fees, which is two-point-five-six percent of the total city budget for the development department. Some of the things we've tried and do and accomplish with our, uh, funding, uh, through the development department, uh, again, abandoned property acquisition and sale through six fifty-seven A. Uh, nuisance garages, nuisance garages, uh, targeting for improvement there. And twenty-eighteen, three hundred, over three hundred notices were sent, uh, two hundred and sixteen have complied by October of, uh, twenty nineteen. Uh, did send out additional notice, uh, here this winter and, uh, looking to see some more compliance here this spring and summer. Uh, nuisance trees, uh, grant project administration, uh, working for, applying for grants, whether that's for the development department or the parks department, including the Flint River Trail. Uh, had the citizens academy again with, uh, graduating class, uh, shown there. Birthday, um, annual event down at the Port of Burlington, been going on twenty-plus years. Um, our department plays a big part of that, the fall trash drop-off. Working with brownfields, EPA-funded projects and healthy neighborhoods, uh, regional planning, has the Great River Housing Trust and, uh, different projects like that. Little highlight on the redevelopment program quickly. Um, this is kind of transitioned when we initially started this. Uh, we were, uh, generating quite a bit of revenue through our property sales. I think we were able to pick some of those abandoned homes that, uh, were in pretty good condition and get some revenue back into the program that funded additional, uh, demolition, um, or other projects within there. We're at a point now where it's primarily homes that are being demolished or are very poor quality homes that need quite a bit of work. So, as you can see in FY eighteen, we sold fourteen properties and generated over thirty thousand in sales. FY nineteen was sixteen with just under fourteen thousand, and FY twenty, year-to-date, we've sold four with thirty-five hundred in sales. Uh, it's still a good, even though we're not generating revenue, we're, uh, still affecting quite a few neighborhoods and improving neighborhoods by removing those blighted structures and then getting structures that can be rehabbed in the hands of property owners that are willing to do so. Um, Parkview Care Site was one of those bigger projects that ate up a lot of the funding. Um, we have, again, three lots for sale there adjacent to Dankworth Park. Um, we do have a bid or offer on one of the lots, so that'll come forward, uh, as a set date at the next, uh, council meeting. So that, that's a good, uh, sign to see is new construction out there and, uh, kind of backfill some of those lost funds that we've had through some of the demolition. As I mentioned, uh, this fall, um, the demolition program, uh, through the presentation to council, we have ten properties that are owned or targeted for possible demolition by the city. At a cost, estimated cost of a hundred and seventeen thousand, uh, and that's just kind of scratching the surface. So this demolition program or redevelopment program is one of our CIP items. Um, I think we have fifty thousand requested for this year. And you see how far that gets us on kind of our list right now. Hopefully some of these Parkview Care Site sales can help in that as well, but, uh, we do have a, a great need for that in our community to remove some of these blighted abandoned structures. There are development department reports, um, shows the total number of permits, which again includes, uh, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, uh, permits, as well as just general building permits for new construction or rehab. Our permit fees collected, um, here it shows from FY seventeen to nineteen, going from three hundred and thirty-nine thousand to a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And then the valuation on those permits. Um, some of those are stated by the homeowners. It is reflective of the permit fees that we collect. Uh, one note in FY nineteen, it, you see a higher valuation over FY eighteen. Part of that, we've gone to a new permitting system. I work, calculate, calculates or enters data a little differently. Sometimes homeowners enter a value for electrical permit that we need to try and separate out. But did have four million dollars worth of value from the turf project out there that, uh, did not have a building permit fee associated with that. So that would pull down, uh, the collective permit fees and valuation a little bit. Uh, four million dollars for reference on a typical building permit is thirty-six thousand dollars that, um, that was waived through their request, uh, to council. Uh, rental inspections, we still continue to see the trend of more rentals in our community. This isn't a fixed number, because we do have s- single-family duplex on five-year cycles and, uh, multifamily and three-year cycles. So there's some years that spiked a little bit, but we do see the trend upward overall of the number of rentals that we're doing on an annual basis. Going from thirteen hundred units inspected in FY seventeen to over eighteen hundred in FY nineteen. And then based on that, uh, the increase in rental permit fees collected. Uh, nuisance inspections, so properties processed, those are all the properties that we've either addressed as a nuisance, gotten a complaint on a nuisance, or, uh, touched in some manner through our inspection or abatement process. Do seal, still see quite a few abated by the property owner. Somewhat consistent there, maybe two to one that are abated by the property owner upon notice versus us having to abate through a contractor and then, uh, the fees collected for that. The CIP for the development department, uh, really focuses on the redevelopment program, which is the demolition fund, uh, also used for local match for our Great River Housing Trust, uh, that, uh, regional planning, Mike Norris and Sarah Hecox were here talking about. That program acts similar to a CDBG, an owner-occupied rehab program for the community, uh, but it's funded through, uh, the Great River Housing Trust. Uh, and we've contributed ten thousand annually for, uh, each grant, uh, each grant cycle for that. Um, so that would leave the remaining funds for demolition, uh, are looking at, uh, that's, did we, oh, fifty thousand or sixty total. Increased amount in FY twenty-one, uh, and then decreasing FY twenty-two and then stabilizing at thirty thousand in FY twenty-three through twenty-five. And then the ten thousand annually for the, uh, housing grants and programs. I think I need to update mine a little bit just to match there, but, um. Other projects, healthy neighborhoods, uh, this is, would be the third year for that program, uh, has had quite a bit of community support, uh, gotten funds through different foundations and, uh, individuals contributing to that. So you see the fifteen thousand dollar total of that, uh, five thousand is from city funds, remaining is from donations and foundations that have contributed towards that. Hope to give a, update on, uh, I guess how the successes of this past year, uh, here in the next month or so on that as well. But that targets some neighborhoods where individuals or an individual leads a program to get four or five people in their neighborhood to, uh, make an application, uh, to, um, make improvements to the exterior of their home. Uh, also build community, because you have to apply as a team. It's not just one individual in different areas. It's kind of a team application, uh, for a, a smaller neighborhood or smaller block area. Creative placemaking, uh, looking at a hundred thousand dollar total, ten thousand local match, Tanny McCoy presented this fall, um, to bring, uh, I think we're meeting tomorrow. Zach Meinhimer, uh, program two, I guess there's quite a few different facets to it. I'm probably not the greatest to speak on that. But, uh, they're raising additional, uh, match. I think there's an additional sixteen thousand local match for that. And then the rest would be a grant to, um, look at programs and practices that can be implemented in Burlington to.
What is creative placemaking?
Neither of us are going to do justice by this. You want Tanny to come and do that, but it's, it's trying to, I, a lot of it's going to be focused on downtown and creating, how do you create some unique culture? And some, some, some projects that you can really just be things that are going to draw people into the downtown area. She's going to be much better at this than I am. I know that they've worked with, uh, hospital as well. I don't know if they secured funding from them, have they?
They've got some local match.
So it's, it's one that the hospital sees too as being a, a good thing for the community, but you're going to want her to come back and make that presentation, not us.
Actually, it's probably next person to go listen to Zach tomorrow if you can. I know we're all invited, so it's, uh, he does a pretty good presentation.
Is that nine o'clock?
Uh, I thought it was ten.
Ten thirty?
Yeah.
Ten thirty, the chamber line room.
Okay, I don't have that on my schedule right now.
You can get there early and make calls.
Uh, hey Eric, on that healthy neighborhoods, do we release the funds after the work's done or before, or how's that work?
After it's done, and it's a one-to-one match, up to a thousand dollars per property, so they have to spend that and submit those receipts to us. And then we go out and inspect and verify and, um, so if they spend five hundred dollars, they qualify for two fifty. If they spend two thousand or above, they can qualify for a thousand dollars. And those are pre-approved, uh, improvements. It's not just, I want to do whatever. They have to be approved through the program and, um, but we have seen some successes with that.
Okay.
Uh, wayfinding signage, this has been in the, in the CIP the last few years. There was a, through the convention visitors bureau, there's a wayfinding study, I don't know if that's five years ago or so. That was four years ago, approved, uh, and presented to council at the time. But trying to implement some of those directional signages in our community to some of our key locations, whether it be how to get to downtown from Roosevelt or how to get to the recplex or casino or some of these spots where we have visitors in the community. Or even community members that don't quite realize, uh, how to get around to certain locations, uh, identifying our parks and different things. So trying to start to implement some of that plan, that was approved, uh, a few years ago.
Yeah, and that was coordinated through the chamber. They were looking to have, how can we do some signage that not just Burlington, West Burlington as well, that coordinates between the two. The signs that we have for parking now are, came out of that, directly out of that study. And the additional signage would be done in a way that matched that same style of signs.
So that's all the CIP. We previously had or discussed different projects, uh, just for your information on whether it's a downtown facade project had been discussed. We had completed one a few years ago. The opportunity to apply again would require quite a bit of local match. Um, a sidewalk program, uh, had been in, uh, the city had five or six years ago for quite a number of years and it had been cut. Uh, and then historic tax, uh, credit workshop and di- district designation. We've designated quite a bit of the downtown as national register properties. Um, there are a few more outliers that could be brought into that, that enables them to qualify for historic tax credits and, uh, really is a driver for a lot of that redevelopment, uh, like the Blaw Building or Motors Building. They rely heavily on those historic, historic tax credits. Healthy neighborhoods, we've done that on a year-by-year basis, uh, so that'd be something we'd, if we continue success on that, look to bring back. As grants occur, whether it's the home grant that regional planning presented or CDBG owner-occupied rehab grants, uh, those typically require local match, uh, and then other community wayfinding signage. Those are just, uh, some possible future projects as funds become available or as, um, we're able to apply for grants that we may look for in the future to bring forward as, uh, requests in the CIP. So that's the development side of things. Do you have any, any questions on that before we move on to parks?
Eric, any plans to revitalize the sidewalk program?
Well, it's something we'd, would need funds through the city for. Uh, I think we'd requested a couple of years ago, but just weren't able to fund it. It's something I, I think we'd like to see at some point, maybe a little different program than what was in the past, uh, where it was just a voluntary, uh, looking at targeted areas. Some of our higher traffics, uh, streets like West Avenue or Division or, uh, Mount Pleasant, where we know there's more walkers and runners and joggers and more traffic on those streets. And how do we get people to upgrade their sidewalks, maybe through an incentive program versus just people that are replacing their sidewalk anyway and applied for funds and now they reduce their costs? So, um, that's probably something we'll.
I think as our, let me start again. I think, um, I would like to see us place an emphasis back on the sidewalks again. I think the emphasis is making your city as walkable as you can. So I think I'd like to see us revisit and do something versus just, uh, on-your-own system, which doesn't seem to get done. And I think the weather hasn't been real favorable on our sidewalks over the years. I think there's a lot of ones in really bad repair.
Eric, how are we doing on making every sidewalk ADA compliant? Like, is that a Nick thing?
We, last year we had a first iteration of kind of a ADA compliance, uh, schedule of where we wanted to try and make all the ramps at the very least, try and bring it, bring them up to ADA compliance. But I think, I don't know how many years ago the sidewalk program was around.
Six or so. Six or five or six, seven maybe.
I think the question on how to do it is, is do you offer a carrot and a, or a stick or both, and then I think the problem is, is offering some sort of incentive or, or match to try and do that, where you're pulling the funding from to do that. The, I guess the stick part or the punishment to inspect sidewalks, there are sidewalk programs, you know, in Iowa City and, you know, some of the larger communities, where you have people go out and inspect for defaults in sidewalk, you know, if you have a big fault between panels, but that unfortunately takes staff time to do that, and I, I don't have anybody in engineering right now that has the ability to do that, so it would have to be kind of an add-on, kind of maybe a coordinated effort with community development, but.
When, when it happened in the past, I think it was with the person that was the right-of-way at the time that you don't have, and then Development Department kind of working coordination, so that staff time has decreased, and then just the funding to do it, it used to be four dollars would cover a third of the cost of a sidewalk, now that might cover a tenth of the cost, four dollars per running foot or something, it's just increased so much the cost that a ten thousand dollar program ten years ago might fund quite a bit, but now it would fund very little, so it would take quite a bit of funds to do something, I think.
How are we doing on, this is going to be clumsy, okay, how are we doing on grants? Because it seems like my first year, we had a lot of grant proposals coming through development in first year and a half, two years, and that's slowed down, are they, are we've used the most of those, or are we still being aggressive on?
We've applied for, I think, two or three CDBG grants in the last few years and haven't been successful.
Okay.
The main trail grant, we have two trail projects going on now that we took a few years to get to, but one's in the CIP and the parks end of it. Still applying for the Flint River Trail, part of that's working with, we're, we're with French Renticker, our engineer, on getting those designs so that we can get estimates to apply for grants, but.
So we're, we're still as aggressive?
Still doing it, it is, I think there was a little learning curve with changing of staff and getting those back up to speed, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions on?
I have a question about wayfinding signs, and this might be a NIC question, but when visitors to our community get stuck by a coal train, is there any way we can redirect them to the overpass, or are they just stuck sitting there and getting furious because Burlington's not very friendly, is there anything we can do to put signage there?
I think that probably could be something part of the Tiger Grant with signage on Division and Main there.
I think that would be awesome.
Yeah.
Train overpass on that.
Something, yeah, so they don't still sit there and get frustrated.
Any other questions for development? All right, you want to move on to parks and recreation then?
So the mission for parks is to enhance the lives of residents and visitors to our community by providing high-quality park and recreation facilities, fun and safe recreation programs, and environmentally sound services. So under the Park and Rec Department, there are six different budget codes, parks maintenance, forestry maintenance, parks swimming pool, recreation activities, and then what you're all general fund activities, and then the Flint Hills Golf Course and Recplex, which are enterprise activities. Some of the issues and items within the Park and Recreation Department as a whole is staffing, we're very heavily dependent on seasonal employees, can range up to sixty, seventy seasonal employees that we have within the park system at any given time, retention and turnover, training, being competitive with wages, those are all things that we're competing for, a lot of the same employees that could go to Target or McDonald's or some other places and probably make more than we're able to offer wage-wise here at the city, but we have been fortunate, we have had some longstanding seasonal employees, but on an annual basis, we're still trying to fill those gaps and try and accomplish what we need to. Aging facilities and amenities, just trying to maintain what we have and replace as we're able, whether that's a playground or a park shelter or restroom in our parks or different facilities such as that, we want to make sure we have attractive and usable facilities and sites for our residents of our community and for visitors that come into our community as well. The enterprise operations, the golf course and Recplex, just trends in use, trying to continue to encourage and make people aware of what we have to offer. Our leagues, especially at the Recplex, have seen quite a bit of decline, that's local players, softball, volleyball, things like that, and then just what are, we're competing for time with other, competing for time and with other facilities in the area as well, so people have a lot to do anymore, and why do they want to use our facilities versus doing something else, and making sure we are offering quality facilities is one thing we can do. Park and Rec is a quality of life, I guess, service, we provide facilities and amenities for residents of our community, they're also there to draw new individuals and families and visitors to the area and to support economic development. You know, some of you hear sometimes, I mean, the impact of trails on people coming into the community, or people that come to the, look at our community for a job and they see the Recplex or the Turf or different facilities, and that's a big draw for a lot of people that they don't want to just go live in a community and work, they want things to do, and that's kind of where Park and Rec comes into play a lot of times, and what face are we presenting for our facilities and our, in our community. I think we offer quite a bit, and it's something then continuing to try and maintain those, we have very quality parks and hope to continue to maintain those. Parks maintenance and forestry, we have eight to ten park seasonal employees, two forestry seasonal employees in addition to the full-time, they maintain thirteen park sites, approximately two hundred areas of, two hundred acres of parks, ground shelters, playgrounds, ball courts, restrooms, our buriedom right-of-way and scattered lots, we have seven, seventy-five hundred right-of-way trees and twenty-eight hundred park trees that are maintained through the forestry division, and then the various wooded areas, Bonds Hollow, areas by the sewer system through Dankworth Park, different areas like that. Equipment is the key requirement for us to maintain a facility, so that's what you'll see in the CIP, more so than projects, it's equipment, primarily mowers and whether it's golf carts or different things like that. If we don't have quality equipment, then we're not able to maintain our, maintain our facilities. Our parks budget sees some annual change based on project needs, but fairly consistent, especially on the parks maintenance side, if we have a project, whether it's either contractual or we're able to do in-house, sometimes they'll swap out year to year, but just maintaining our facilities, our shelters and our playgrounds. EAB, as I mentioned earlier, it is something we've dealt with on the park side and the right-of-way side, removing stumps, that was a big project over the last few years. Just wanted to make, I guess, council aware, if you ever want to see all the trees in our inventory, this website that, that's where we do all our work orders, Burlington, Iowa, or BurlingtonIA.Treekeeperssoftware.com, it's open to the public, but any tree on the city right-of-way, it's identified the size, the species, when it was planted, if it was recently, or, so every tree in the right-of-way is in, within the system, if you just want to know what type of tree is outside your house or in the park, you can go to this and see what it is. Some park improvement projects that have been completed in the last year that our funding has gone towards, in some instances, the outdoor classroom signage in Crapo Park, that was a REAP grant and then funded additionally through the Bridge Race, that was two years ago, that was the project for that. We have these educational signboards that are on the side, not facing the street, and we've, have been discussing with some local schools or area schools to get some classes out there, we have funding for four sets of signs, I think the last three sets are on order, but they're geared towards education of the youth, and we have some packets, but those can be traded out throughout the seasons, so there's four different sets there. Deedwin and Gladys White Memorial Park, there on Angular Street, that was pretty much a complete renovation overhaul of that park, the summer was completed, that was funded, totally was Slaughter Funds and a Wellmark Grant, so those did not include any city budgeted funds on that either. Todd Spot Playground, although it was in FY twenty budget, it was the twenty-nineteen Bridge Race funded that, and I'll have more, some pictures on that next presentation, but if you're not familiar, the playground out by the pool, it's a preschool-age playground, our first preschool dedicated playground, that was a very neat playground there and a very neat backstory from the, the individual that donated some of the funds originally, from her, his daughter, and his daughter's memory was able to come back for the ribbon cutting for that and donated some additional funds for some benches out there, but that's been a neat project, and we've identified projects every annually that we can fund through the Bridge Race funding, so are looking to maintain increased participation in that because those funds do go towards park projects that have an impact. Some of the other things, don't realize, I guess, picnic tables, built twenty new ones, repaired twenty, we have over two hundred and fifty picnic tables in our inventory that we maintain, the Crapo Fountain, Bullinger Fountain in Crapo Park, did some electrical wiring and lighting upgrades on that this past year, Hilton Harbor and Shakespeare Garden, so a lot of these facilities, just trying to maintain those over the course of a season. On the forestry side, removed a hundred and thirty trees, a hundred and thirty-two stumps, planted, or pruned eight hundred and twenty-one trees, and planted a hundred and seventy-nine trees in this past year. Some future planned projects, the Dankworth restroom, Dankworth playground replacements, Dankworth Park pool deck, trying to do some improvements to that on a as-needed basis there. Amenities, drinking fountains, benches, trash cans, park amenities are not inexpensive unfortunately, but they have to hold up to the weather and hold up to oftentimes people trying to damage them or other things, so just trying to maintain what we have there. One thing I'll mention here, this picture on the bottom, Snake Alley Stairs, that's a project we have some initial funds in the CIP for a couple of years out, trying to match up with the West Avenue, or Washington Street project, right now I think it's thirty thousand dollars, that may need to go up by ten, ten times that, once we get actual engineering and design on that, so that's something we'll have to, as we get closer to, have further discussion on. Swimming pool and recreation, those are most managed under a recreation manager, the swimming pool has fifteen to twenty seasonal employees, summer camp has six to eight on an annual basis. Pool issues and items, very weather-dependent, school year-dependent, based on the number of kids in our community. One thing, we've done some improvements to the pool in the last few years, the liner within the pool, I think had a fifteen-year projected lifetime, some of the roof structure on the poolhouse, but there is an end to the pool at some point, whether we can plan for it or not, there will be, have to be a decision made at some point, do you want to keep a pool open, do you want to do something new with the pool, or is it, when it's done, it's done, but that's something, try and relate to council that it is a very old pool, if there's, to build a new pool like that is millions of dollars, so at some point a decision will have to be made, what, what's the plan for the pool, hopefully that's ten-plus years out, but it, ten-plus years out gets closer every year, so. On the recreation side, the primary program for that is the summer camp, that's seen some increases in the last few years, heard a lot of good things about, from attendees of that, generally thirty-five to forty-five attendees per week, that's at Perkins Park. As you see, the revenue is really based on increased attendance from twenty-two thousand in FY sixteen to thirty-seven thousand in FY nineteen. Other program is the Great River Bridge Race, again, that's a park fundraiser project, try and have had over five hundred attendees in that race over the last few years, this year looking at May sixteenth. Haven't fully identified what actually we're looking to do with those funds, other than looking at the Horseshoe Court, which is in Crapo Park and near the Horseshoe Courts there, there's a playground back there, looking to add an inclusive play feature, that's something we're planning to do at the Dankworth Park Playground as well, add additional inclusive play features, it's something we get here and there as a child or someone's in a wheelchair or maybe doesn't have accessibility or has accessibility issues, what facilities do we have for them, and trying to add features or events at this location, but then Dankworth will heavily be an inclusive playground as well. Part of the difficulty with that is the surface feature of playgrounds, the playground at White Park was around a fifty thousand dollar playground, actual playground component, to do the surfacing there would have been sixty, seventy thousand dollars additional just to do the surfacing to make it eighty, fully accessible, so that's something we struggle with is just funding to do what we'd like to do, but that's what we're looking at doing this year. Swimming pool saw some attendance decline in twenty nineteen, more closer to the twenty-fifteen numbers, as I'll talk about with the Recplex and Golf Course, rain played a big factor in a lot of what we did and some of those declines in the past year.
June was terribly rainy.
Go over some of that. In twenty eighteen, we did not do swim lessons, those were programmed through, we had a leasing at the time, so we had some decline in revenue, part of that was to, due to us not offering swim lessons ourselves, that did decrease our operating costs, but also shown here decreased our revenues. FY twenty year-to-date revenues are up five thousand over FY nineteen at the pool. We would love to get back to those twenty sixteen numbers, but a lot of it is weather-dependent, whether that's rain or temperature, people don't want to go to the pool when it's seventy degrees out. Budget numbers, again, FY nineteen budget and actual, and then FY twenty and twenty-one proposed budgets. Personnel costs are, again, the, one of the drivers of how we operate, the different park divisions, seasonal labor costs, trying to, again, competing for employees and trying to be at least a somewhat competitive wage is one of our big goals, that we're able to attract individuals that want to apply for us and actually stay the whole season and work the whole season for us, we do have turnover in most of those divisions, but trying to get quality people to apply is a goal for ours. Contractual and commodities, within these four divisions, only saw a three hundred and twenty dollar increase from twenty twenty-one, so the remaining increase is just personnel This shows the breakdown between personnel, contractual, and commodities for those four general fund operations, the parks, forestry, pool, and recreation from FY eighteen through FY twenty-one. The general fund expenditures net of grants and fees for these is one point zero one five million, six point four six of the total general fund budget. The Flint Hills Golf Course is, again, enterprise fund, intended to cover its cost, unfortunately has not done that the last couple of years, again, plays weather-dependent, which impacts revenue. Demographics of the players really representative of the community, so our focus, we've had a couple of meetings this winter, is trying to focus on new golf retraction, some different programs that we might be able to do to get people out there that might not be aware of golf as something that they may want to do or have interest in. We have had discussions, lack of a driving range hurts the golf course a little bit, just to try and get people out to teach them how to golf or, for new golfers or inexperienced golfers, just to get confident to maybe want to join or play a little bit more. Mowers and carts are the primary CIP item, we did have eighty-one thousand five hundred in FY twenty adopted CIP funds, twenty-one thousand of that is not being spent on carts, it's carried over into FY twenty-one, just so that we can get a larger cart order instead of having four or five carts from one year, and we try and replace every, every two years about a quarter of our carts, that can go up and down a little bit, between eight and fifteen carts every two years, so those are on an eight-year cycle, we keep them for eight years and try and replace batteries at year four to extend the life of those. Some of the stats from the golf course, rounds played, as you see, twenty nineteen was down quite a bit over the last few years, had been fairly consistent around that eighteen thousand mark the last few years, but twenty nineteen did see a dip to fifteen thousand four hundred. Season pass holders have seen, I guess, somewhat of a. Season pass holders have seen, I guess, somewhat of a minimal decline each year. A lot of our season pass holders are seniors and unfortunately, some of those age out even getting out to play, so trying to attract new individuals there. Quality of the course and player experience is critical for continued play for our customers. We have a very high quality, quality maintained course, something that we, we hear often and is critical to at least getting those that come out to continue to come out. We examine fees annually, do remain competitive in the area. We now offer a punch card, that's something new, we're trying this year is a 10-round punch card. Maybe individuals don't want to buy a season pass, but this might incentivize them to play a little bit more, it's a lower cost and get out there a little bit more than they otherwise would. We've examined high school golf fees in the past as well, council approved a resolution last fall on that. As I mentioned, looking at new events in 2020 to make the experience less intimidating, more accommodating, expose more individuals and families to golf, whether that's a date night or ladies' night or something that, what can we do to offer or get people out that may be feeling inconvenienced or don't have the time or maybe a three or four hole play and go type package where it's not the two to four hours that you're tying up of your time. So that's something we're looking at. Are there some nights or different experiences that we can offer in this coming year that are unique?
How about a round of frisbee golf, set up some baskets?
Well, we've looked at, we have fling golf out there, we're looking at.
What's fling golf?
Fling golf is something I talked about last year, they're clubs that you put a gall, a ball at the end of the club and you throw it, and then that acts as the putter as well, so we have four of those that can be rented at any time, I think. Looking at, whether foot golf is something that, there's some communities in Iowa that offer where you kick a soccer ball into holes that are in the rough and you can play 18 holes on nine holes and charge a fee. There's like a half dozen courses in Iowa that have foot golf. We have big soccer groups here with CISA and otherwise, so.
Right.
Those are things we're looking at, the cost and what investment would be needed and then maybe what revenue could be generated.
Is there still junior golf out there in the summer?
Yeah, we still have that, offer that, try and increase that each year, so. So it is something we're looking at, what, what can we offer? Whether it's a date night and using summer camp to support, if you have kids and you want to come out and play, things like that, so.
How many leagues are out there now?
It's generally a league every night, there's four or five leagues.
Bless you.
That run throughout the season. The city hosts one and then there's different businesses or corporations that operate them, yeah. Weather impact, we had 16 inches of rain in May out at the course and the course was closed for seven straight days in May and June over Memorial Weekend. Eagle State Tournament was canceled, which had 60 players and the Sumbera Open was canceled, which had 120 players. That was actually moved and then canceled. And then I think the Hy-Vee Tournament was moved twice and canceled, that would have been in FY20, but it's the first time we've had a canceled tournament that substantial versus just moving them or trying to play through some of the stuff. Estimated, just from those two tournaments and then that one week straight of non-play was over $20,000 of revenue lost due to that rain. $1,000 to $2,000 for each weekday, 2,500 on weekend days and then approximately $3,000 for the Eagles Tournament and $6,000 for the Sumbera Open, so that's pretty substantial just for those two tournaments in that week of being closed. We know we're going to have rain throughout the year, but it was, as I think as we saw at the Recplex as well, a little more substantial and has a pretty big impact on our revenue. Recplex, go there again, maintaining quality facility. John, one board as kind of the grounds person of the year, a couple of years ago, we are recognized as having a very high-quality facility out there, but it does take time to continue to maintain that. It is now a 20-plus-year-old facility, so we are seeing some of those items that do need replaced, whether that's coolers or chairs or carpeting in the clubhouse or different things like that. As we'll see in the CIP, the lighting out there, looking to upgrade that to LED, we're starting to see more and more maintenance and repair costs on the lighting on those One thing where Kirk is looking to do differently this year is just for the schedule, kind of adjust and evaluate the fall tournaments a little later in the season instead of booking those out. So far, there's one large group that hosted some tournaments that went, kind of brought his group into another group, went from USSA Associated to Perfect Mind Associated and I think we saw some tournaments dip a little bit last year. They're doing some tournaments in the turf this winter and have seen some of those numbers rebound, but we did have to cancel a couple of tournaments due to lack of players last year and hopefully we can evaluate them and they can build up their brand again and get some of those tournaments to get more teams in them by this fall. League play has been steady over the past two seasons, but is still down substantially over five, 10 years ago, which I'll show here in a little bit. Again, we're competing for time with other facilities in the greater region and the state, whether it's Mount Pleasant, Pella, Des Moines, Fort Madison, Minneapolis host soccer tournaments, all these, every, there's so many different facilities that host, whether they're big or small tournaments now, we are competing with those in one way or another for those teams to come to our facility, so it just seems to be a, a big growth in the last few years of some of these facilities and I'm sure that'll level out at some point, but we are competing with a lot of different areas in the state and region for the same Operating expenditures and revenues, over the, from FY19 budget and actual and then proposed, in FY19, the budget was actually 128,000, projected to be a deficit, actually is 105, which isn't great, it's less than budgeted. We did see a FY20, as I'll talk here in a little bit, some tournaments that were canceled due to rain or lack of teams, our revenue is down quite a bit this year over next, but hopefully that can see a rebound and that 159 proposed in FY21 will come down quite a bit, I guess is the goal anyway with some of what we're doing. This is the Recplex league teams, so as you see, between 2014 and 2019, we had 331 teams that played out of the Recplex on a weekly basis to 232 this past year, so we're about 100 teams. And then if you look at estimated revenue per team for softball and volleyball, about $1,000 per team softball that we generate revenue or lose in revenue when we don't have a team sign up and 500 per team in volleyball. Softball went from 111 teams in 2014 to 62 this last year, which is actually up four over last year. And volleyball went from 58 in 2014 to 34 in 2019, which is up two over last year. So we have, trying to do some different things with scheduling and some different nights of the week. We have a five versus five versus five softball league where it's a smaller team and different opportunities there, so trying to do some different things with that. Hopefully that can continue to stabilize if not increase. Soccer did see a dip this past year, over the last couple of years of the Rec League Soccer, the youth soccer leagues, over the number of teams that are competing in that, which has an impact on gate and concessions as well. This is the trends of what we offer, so slow pitch softball, averaged, had 62 last year. Used to have fast pitch softball, have not had that the last couple of years. Volleyball, soccer, we see over the last four years, averaged 136 teams, this past year was 122. Flag football has been fairly consistent and we are, we're down three teams from 2018, from 235 down to 232, but still down quite a bit over the last five years. Revenue has seen a decline in admission revenue, which is based on number of teams coming through the gate quite a bit. Concessions, down as well. Used to see teams at the Recplex come out and kind of more of a social gathering thing, now you see a lot of teams or individuals come and then leave and maybe don't get concessions like they used to. Field rentals is up. SEC has soccer team now, they use, rent our fields for their practice and games. There are teams for some of the tournaments, we have different tiers of what you can, we charge for field rental based on what service we provide, whether that's raking them more often or having different things, so we have seen some, some of the larger tournaments request more maintenance, which increases our field rental costs over the last couple of years. Attendance is down slightly from 2019 to 2018, from 72,000 to 68,000, which is still a substantial number of people that come through the Recplex, over 68,000 people come through the Recplex annually. But when you factor in the per day, 503 per day, that's fairly consistent, kind of shows we've had reduced number of days where it was open due to rain or other, other things Tournament info, I did hand out to the economic impact analysis, which always have to take that for what it is, based on number of teams that come to Burlington from 80 miles away and what that impact is. The overall economic impact versus just the direct local spending estimated. Did have a similar number of tournaments this past year, but the number of teams was down substantially over 200 teams less than 2019 versus 2018. Teams from 80 miles away was down as well, but based on the number of teams in our tournaments and teams 80 miles away, the estimated direct local spending, again, just based on kind of factor numbers of what average spent is on hotels, food shopping, gas was over $5 million in 2019 on our local economy, local community. Teams travel from quite far away to come to the Recplex. We did see a few more states in 2018, but still draw from quite a few areas, primarily the Midwest here. As I mentioned, looking to schedule the fall season later, the spring and summer is looking very good, very full at this time. Still have the larger tournaments in the fall scheduled in, but looking at some of those other ones to try and determine what the best fit is as we get later in the year. 2019 tournament cancellations, again, what we're looking at with rain and as I mentioned before, we're always going to have rain, but it seemed to have, hit us especially hard this past year. In April, we had two tournaments canceled at the Recplex, one moved into the turf. It was cold outside, but could have been held outside, typically would have been held at the Recplex, but we have another amenity in town, so they did move into the turf instead of staying outside, but that was a loss of $6,300. The second one had rain and wind, which probably would have been canceled anyway. In May, we had two tournaments canceled, one for lack of teams, one for rain, based on the previous year, there was an estimated 20, over 21,000 lost revenue. And then September, which is in FY20, not in this past year's budget, but we've already had three tournaments that were canceled, two to lack of teams, one to rain, estimated 19,000. So that's where we're looking at this group that had been very successful in past tournaments that they've hosted and managed, moving over to a different affiliation and just didn't have that name recognition anymore, trying to see if they can build that back up and before we give them those spots in the fall, to make sure that we're not having tournaments canceled due to a lot, our lack of teams. CIP for the Parks Department, trail maintenance, we've had 5,000 annually, I think we did not have funds in the past year. Looking to have 10,000 in FY21, we did purchase a sweeper to maintain our trail system out of this fund this past year. That's there to maintain what we have, since we do have a extensive trail system, the Flint River Trail, the trail that goes around the Recplex on West Avenue has been extended down Mason Road as well. Majority of our CIP items are equipment, park mowers, we'll see annually in our CIP, forestry dump truck replacing a, it's a 19, I have that here, a 1994 truck that we have and a 2001 truck that we have with a singular truck, so reducing our fleet, trying to be more efficient with that. Recplex UTV, golf carts, again, carried over 21,000 from FY20 to have a larger purchase in one year so that we're not, so we're purchasing approximately a quarter of our carts every two years. And then the batteries, which again, is every two years as well to extend the life of those carts from four years to eight years. And then some mower reels at the golf course. Improvement projects, Flint River Trail, we have 500,000, I guess, in the budget, of that, only $100,000 is local, the remaining would be grant, whether that's state record TAP or other trail grants, have not been identified at, at this point yet. West Avenue Trail, we have been awarded funds, transportation alternative funds for that, 298,000 of that, 41,800 is local match, the remaining would be grant funds. The Dankwart restroom, looking to do that in FY21, 225,000, that's fully Starker funds, no direct lost or hotel motel funds in that project, all Starker. Recplex infield renovations, again with the facility over 20 years old now, looking to do some work to ensure the grading and drainage is still maintained, that we can, we can operate the Recplex after rain fairly quickly and fairly consistence, consistently, but we need to make sure that, that continues in maintaining our fields. Upgrading to LED walkway lighting, irrigation pedal at the golf course, the golf course in Recplex have a quarter of irrigation that has to be maintained, especially in the, didn't see it a lot last year, but in some of those dry summers, if we don't irrigate, that can really ruin a lot of our fields and course. And then have 30,000 for pool deck improvements, that's something we'll have to evaluate on an annual basis. We did some improvements a few years ago, but we'll continue to evaluate that and do what we can out there. One note in the CIP, we did have, did move back the original request for the Recplex field lighting from FY23 to '24 and then moved one request out, hopefully it can bring back in FY26.
You're also out in '24, you're looking to do the restroom concessions, can you get to that or?
No, I just have that in future items, yeah. So a lot of the future items you'll see in the CIP sheets is mowers, Flynn Hills Golf Course, mowers and tractor, Recplex mower, pretty much every year, we're replacing a mower, trying to maintain over 200 acres just in our park system and then the Recplex and 18-hole golf course, that's what we go through more than anything else. Park tractors, park truck, forestry bucket, crane gravel truck is expensive, I guess, to say the least, item, something that hopefully will make us a little more efficient. It's one of those that can, with the crane arm, can go up and grab the tree and cut it and bring it down and slide it into the chipper truck on its own, where we're not having to be up in a bucket truck or climbing a tree individually to trim some of these larger trees and hopefully save us time and cost and some of our other equipment as Future improvement projects, Dankwart Playground, that's been in the budget a few times, move that back on the backside of the restroom, looking to do the restroom in FY21 and then do the playground in FY22. As I mentioned, field lights at the Recplex, that'll be something, that's for one set of lights and we have four sets out there, around 150,000 each set, so that'll, as funds are available every couple of years, that'd be something we'd like to see done to complete that. Snake Alley Stairs, I think we have 30,000 in the budget, that could be north of a quarter million or 100,000, it's just quite a bit of unknown with some of those retaining walls and then just the historic nature of the snake alley and something we'll continue to evaluate with our engineer, working with French Rennecar on that, what's the best option and what's the most economical option for that. And then Crapo Tennis Courts in FY25, some park amenities, replacing some benches and different things there. Looking at a Lake Starker renovation, primarily with a REIT grant in FY25, seen a lot of the. a lot of the outside stone edging, kind of collapsing and falling, and some of that liner, that was replaced fifteen years ago, needing work on it as well. And then Riverside Park lighting, trying to add that. And as I mentioned, kind of evaluating the future needs of the pool each year with the age of that and what, what needs to be done. So that's park and rec.
Questions?
Only question I have, are, does, are we still doing the pool deck improvement projects this year, even though we're not moving forward with the bubble project? That was, that was the purpose for moving that up.
The, the, well, we originally had a pool deck project in the budget three years ago and took that out based on the dome coming in, and they were going to replace the entire deck, but we are required by Public Health to do some pool deck improvements, based on the seal along the edge there is starting to deteriorate, so we have to evaluate that annually, and we'll have to do some patching our goals to patchwork it together. We're not able to do a, it would have been a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty thousand, what they were looking to do for an entire pool deck replacement, but we'll look to patch and do what we can as funds are available.
So the golf course, I'm a golfer, not a very good one, but assuming we have good weather and the revenue does not come back, so is there room somewhere to cut some costs? If we can't generate revenue, then we're going to have to cut some costs, and I view the, I view the golf course a little bit differently than the Recplex, because the Recplex brings in some hotel motel tax dollars. So I'm not saying that for this year, but I think it's something that we need to start, whether we have a task force or something, look at it, what can we do to, if you can't increase play and revenue, what can you do to decrease the cost there? Because it is an amenity. And I, I guess that extends to the pool, too. You know, hopefully it's going to rebound, we're going to have a good weather year. Because it looked like nineteen, we had the same problem, you know, I remember nineteen was kind of a, not nineteen, the year, the year before that, seventeen, I'd have to look back.
And it doesn't even take.
It's cyclical, yeah.
Rain there and just cool weather, you have cool mornings and people aren't going to come out and then.
But eventually we get to the point of diminishing, you know, if you can't generate more revenue, then we got to cut costs somewhere. So I think that's something we really need to look at in the coming years.
I mean, just looking at the golf course, the biggest potential for new revenue streams is going to be a driving range, that's going to require an investment.
Yeah, it's going to require some ground, that's for sure.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, and that's something they've talked about, looking at as their way to reconfigure the course, eliminate ten, or it's not a real good option there, other than the farm field to the west, it would be across the road there, but even that's not.
There is a, there is a space there, if I remember correctly.
There is a space there.
Between eighteen and.
Between one and nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, one and nine.
Very narrow.
It's narrow, but still, for the number of, of golfers out there, I think that it could be, you, to generate the revenue without adding a significant amount of cost. The ground's already prepared, for the most part, there would probably require some signage, netting, some type of platform, but still probably a lot less expensive than trying to purchase new ground and redevelop new ground.
One of the biggest things I remember when I worked out there was that people didn't want to have to go pick up their own golf balls.
Well, and you're right, they're, nobody's, nobody's going to.
Sell them, sell them a bucket of balls, yeah.
Nobody's going to pay for a bucket of balls and then go out and pick them up. You're going to have to have, but again, we're talking about, we'd have to purchase a cart or something that has the ability to pick up the balls, and then staff time.
Any other, any other questions?
Did, did he cover the economic impact analysis? Did you bring that up at all, Eric? Did you want to touch on that?
Well, there's this slide here, you have a little more detail in what I handed out, but just based on the factors of the number of teams that come in for tournaments, this is the weekend tournaments, not the league play, and then looking at teams, number of teams that come from eighty miles away, they might not all stay in local hotels. We've seen where hotels locally are full and they have to stay in Mount Pleasant or Fort Madison or different areas, but just based on these factors and revenue, it estimates at over five million dollars of direct local spending, is spent on hotels, local food, shopping and gas, based on the tournaments that are brought into the Recplex, which is pretty significant for the local economy.
I, I didn't realize that we impacted the other communities around us, that's kind of cool, too.
I mean, there's tournaments like the Monster Match or others, where teams are staying in Fort Madison or Mount Pleasant or any area hotel, or if there's, happens to be other events going on, there's, we've seen some tournaments where people complain that they're not able to stay in Burlington, which is a good thing that the hotels are full, but it's not ideal, we want them to have the best experience and want to come back and stay in our community, so.
Questions? Anybody else?
I just have a question on the, the sweeper for the trails. Will that be on a rotation that it will sweep, or how do we, how often will that go through? Maybe you don't know that yet.
Looking at, I think maybe three times annually, the spring, summer, fall, just depends on maybe a couple of times in the spring. Looking primarily along the trail on Bluff Road there, attached to a skid loader and be able to sweep that off as, in the spring with all the sand that comes off, so.
That'll be great, because I know a lot of sand and garbage tends to accumulate there.
Get your questions out now, anybody else? Jim, did you have anything to add?
Not on this.
Okay. Well, I think that's it for the night, then. Thank you, everybody.
Again, you've got a couple of meetings left. If you're looking at any additions or changes, you're going to need to come up with those fairly soon and bring them forward with some options. I, I think one of the largest things that still stands out there to know exactly where you're at is the developer that will come in this next, next week and make a presentation will have us, how you respond with that has, will have a significant impact on what's going on in the, with the operational cost for the auditorium.
On, on Monday, we've got Nick, and then we've got his presentation as well, the developer's presentation as well. What else, because the agenda's not out yet, is it a?
We, I think Travis is going to, was tentatively on there, it sounds like he's not going to be. Do you remember what else was for work session items? You're not doing deer management, that's something that's going to be another few meetings down the road. I can't remember if there's, I thought there was something else. Was there one other item, one other group that was, no, that was it, wasn't it? That's pretty much it.
So we've got those two presentations, right.
And normal work stuff.
You'll start to go through the agenda, so.
All right. Getting closer. Does anybody want to discuss anything, any, any pet projects that they, they're wanting to do, or?
I think, I think one thing, in light of Jim's revelation last week with the zero percent increase to the health insurance costs, I would like for us to consider, at least mullet over here over the next couple of weeks, adding one police officer to the police department's workforce, using those funds this year and next year, working through the budget process again to, to maintain that level.
I, I would tell you, my, my gut reaction to that is going to be, no, because I, I, here's, here's where I'm coming at on, on something like that. If we're going to fund something, I want to, I don't want to have the safer grant funding issue that we have, the safer grant's fine, but we have to have a plan for how we're going to fund it in year two, year three, year four.
Well, and, and.
You can't, you can't count on insurance being zero increase every year, that's for sure.
I'd agree. I think, in my opinion, long-term, we've, at least I have always looked at trying to reduce our costs with the memorial auditorium. My suggestion this year would have been to have done exactly that, however, since we're not looking at the increase on the insurance, we can use those funds this year and, and try to, to maintain the auditorium's current funding level. But then next year, if those funds are not available, that's essentially where I would look at, trying to recruit those dollars for that additional officer.
I know the public will tell you that safety is their utmost concern, so they would probably be behind something like that, as, as I am myself. And a lot of times, grants are written and they want to know, how is it sustainable? And sometimes at the time, you don't know, you just go into it, you get that officer, you get that other employee, and you hope and pray that it, that works out the following year. Sometimes you just have to, to take a gamble on something.
And, and this is, this is not a grant, I mean, these are.
I understand that.
But the, the way I view it is the auditorium, that subsidy would be the primary source to fund that position long-term, assuming all things are equal as they are today.
Depends on what your developer says, too, and whether.
That's, that's true as well, but that's why I'm bringing it up now, is mullet over.
To be thinking about it.
We'll talk about it.
You guys can go, we're talking, we're talking about, it's not going to involve sewer trash, Don, we're going to, we're going to still pick that stuff up. All right.
Just a second.
Well, you said over the next couple of weeks, we, I have to have the budget done next Friday. It has to be ready to get published. Okay, so I just wanted to make sure.
And, and what she's getting at, she has to know what's the, the dollars we're going to be asking for property taxes, and we, that has to be set by then to go out for public hearings and to meet the timelines under the new state statute.
Like you said, we can't make a decision on anything related to the auditorium, and so after we've listened to the presentation one day.
Yeah.
Where are the people coming in from, the auditorium?
Ryan Jensen is from Des Moines.
The only thing I would say about that insurance thing is, you know, our professional is Jim, and he's cautioned us against using that as a funding source, so that's the only thing I would ask you guys to consider on that.
Well, but for this year, it'll be a one-year funding source.
Just saying.
Not a, not a long-term funding source.
I, you and I will disagree on that, because I'm not a fan of a one-year funding source.
One of the, one of the things that Matt put with, with that, his other piece is renegotiating your contract with BRE, if that was the route you're going with the lower subsidy.
If we go with them, yeah.
That could be what you're, that, that would be the second and ongoing coverage of that, depending on how much you're looking to reduce that subsidy.
Correct.
But then, but then when you get to, is, is, you own discussions, so we've also had the discussions that we need a transit operator, take some pressure off, off, off public works, and so that it becomes, well, if you have six officers coming online, no offense, chief, to getting back to full strength, is it, does it make more sense to have one more officer or to have a public transit director? So we, we haven't heard his pitch yet, so I'm just, I'm keeping my mind open, I'm just saying I would, I would hesitate if it's been advised against using that as a, as a, as an option, as far as the funding.
I think we agreed once before, too, that Nick could focus on stuff that pertains to his, his primary duties if he, he wasn't trying to do two jobs at once, so, yeah, I'm, I'm with you about looking at everything first.
But you got to be pretty quick, as far as what you want to decide after that, so we don't put her in the spot, so. All right, well, was that it for tonight?
And again, the, you're, as you talked about those two positions, police department, they're regular positions that they're looking at, I mean, the different options that they talked about, all of them, you're talking about a person that would cost ninety, ninety-five thousand dollars, the first year with training, a hundred and ten. Transit director, where you would put that person in, where they would, doing part of their duties over in the engineering department, which would be some of those right-of-way things that we've let go to the wayside, that's a ninety thousand level position as well, if you're doing it as a full-time piece. So you get, when you talk about either one of those, you can do as an offset with that health insurance that first year, but not on an ongoing basis, you have to have some way to address that.
And that, that's, that's why I didn't bring it up to both of them. I, I'm okay to say, I prioritize one force man over a transit operator.
Understood.